Right, good morning everyone and welcome to the BOCC meeting this morning. Would like to ask Monte if you don't mind to come up and lead us in invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Good morning. Let us pray. Lord, we just come to you humbly this morning thanking you for all that is good in this county. We just thank you, Lord, that you put a hedge of protection over all of our leadership, all the citizens, all of our emergency responders, just cover them with the blood of Jesus and surround them with the angels and warrior angels watching, guarding over them. Lord, we just thank you for these three men in leadership at the front table this morning. We just ask that you provide them wisdom to make good, sound decisions, to lead as godly men of this county in a proper manner. Lord, we just thank you that all the leadership within the county government is led by you and you provide wisdom to all of us. Lord, we thank you. We thank you for this day. We thank you for this meeting. Put a hedge of protection over this meeting as well, in Jesus mighty name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll call this meeting to order. Rhonda, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Buck?
Here.
Commissioner Schroeder?
Here.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Here.
All right, before we move into the approval of the agenda, I had a special request this morning, a family of Bob Ware, who I think probably everybody knows Bob Ware, had a horrible fall yesterday and they asked if we just mentioned and asked for prayers. He broke his hip, had emergency surgery, and is in pretty tough shape, so anyway, with that, just please remember him. He's been a good friend to the county and is really good in the water conservation act, so. All right, with that approval of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a request to move item D5 to a discussion item.
Okay. To discussion, you said?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda and move D5 to discussion item?
Mr. Chairman, we approve the consent agenda, items 1, 2, 3, and 4, with item 5 being moved to item G2 under discussion.
Second. All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is elected officials, department head and staff reports. Do we have any here present today that would like to make? Sure.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Hankins, Elbert County Public Works Director. I'm here to provide an update on the May 24 hail event that we had in the county. That did happen on Saturday, May 24th. It was a significant hailstorm, especially for the town of Kiowa. We had a total of 52 county vehicles, had notable damage on them. We had 23 sheriff's vehicles, 19 general fund vehicles, and 10 road and bridge vehicles involved in having pretty significant damage. Our fleet manager has worked diligently to get insurance claims submitted for all 52 vehicles. We have coordinated with the insurance company to have an adjuster be here onsite Wednesday, June 18th, and Thursday, June 19th. We're coordinating with all the other departments to have all the vehicles up at the public works facility so he can facilitate the insurance adjustment aspect to that. The windshields that were damaged, we've already replaced those as that's kind of a safety item, you know, so those got done relatively quickly. We're coordinating, like I said, with all the departments and we should have the adjusters' analysis back hopefully, I'm hoping by the first part of next month and see where we go from there. Our hopes are that it can be that dentless hail repair. We'll just have to see how that goes because if it's beyond that, that's gonna, you know, delay a lot of departments in having their vehicles be accessible. So, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, any other elected officials or department heads, like to give any staff or any reports? All right.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions I would like some clarification on.
Okay.
Last meeting, you had a statement on why you voted in favor of the solar farm and there was a couple of things stated in there I just would like some clarification about. One being there was a discussion of the money used for the fees that we would collect from the solar farm being used on a specific bridge. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
I don't remember that statement, but I'll be more than happy to say that out of that $3.4 million we talked about, or had some discussions about 162, we've got a bridge out there that was put in in 1960 that was put in as a temporary bridge, it's falling apart, it's down to one lane, and that's a heavily traveled area. Is that what you're referring to?
I think that's the bridge you were talking about.
Okay.
My concern is it just sounded like it was gonna be a done deal and that wouldn't be a significant-
No, no, that was just strictly an idea.
A project that would need to come before the full board. Likewise, you also mentioned a citizens group being formed to oversee the solar farm. That was the first time that I had heard about that and I would like to hear some more information on that.
Certainly, we're talking about the committee that has been formed, that we've put together for the comprehensive plan as well as the regulations, and we're gonna, we're just talking about utilizing that, but that has not been put together yet.
Okay, 'cause it sounded like it was a separate committee being put together just for the solar farm.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. All right, any other comments, questions from staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. All right, we'll open this up to public comments. If you come up to the podium, please state your name and your address and keep your comments within five minutes, please. Good morning.
So, my comment is on the solar farm that I thought was not approved, and then I walked away and it was approved.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Please, sorry.
Sunny Mills, 27310 Forest Ridge Drive. So, I think the idea was that it was so industrial in a riparian habitat that it would destroy home values and change the feel of that particular beautiful area of Albert that overlooks, has Pike's Peak in the background and Running Stream and beautiful pastures. So, I think what we need to do is revisit the master plan and we need to use your idea of a comprehensive plan so that solar becomes affordable for personal homes and ranches. We have one and we're paying $35 a month for electricity. I never even think about it. I love it. It should be something that all new builds have, that's absolutely part of our code, our building code. And then, of course, in Europe, they're coming up with all kinds of cool stuff, like they have a park with picnic benches and then an umbrella, and on top of the umbrella is solar that's feeding all the needs of the park and the recreation center. You've probably seen solar-covered parking lots, like in Walmart and Safeway. There are ways to do this that don't destroy the feel of the riparian habitat, and I would just hope that when you get everyone together, you have some creative thinkers in your group. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Carrie Gibbelitz, 19656 Weidemeyer Road, Elbert County Environmental Alliance. I'd like to start by commending the Elbert County Planning Commission for a phenomenal job during the public hearing last week. You could tell that they had really spent a lot of time delving into Excel's application and doing their homework. They asked Excel excellent questions that exposed many inconsistencies, omissions, and discrepancies in their application. For example, it was revealed Excel claimed that in 2024, Elbert County received $2 million in tax revenue from existing Excel facilities, when, in actuality, public record shows the amount paid to the general fund for 2024 was only $224,000, just 11% of what they claimed. I highly encourage you to watch the hearing video or read the transcript to learn of other such discrepancies. I think it's really important that you do so. During the hearing, Excel said that if you, the Board of County Commissioners, vote to deny their application, they will evaluate their options in terms of working within their PUC backstop authority or other forms of district court appeal. On January 27th, 2022, the Board of County Commissioners held a work session here with Paul Gomez, who was deputy director of the PUC. Gomez stated that a utility seeks a CP CN if a transmission project is needed, and then the PUC approves the project. He also stated that the project must comply with local zoning rules and regulations. We understand that if local government authorities, i.e. the commissioners, deny or impose unreasonable conditions, the utility can appeal the decision to the PUC. The PUC can reverse the local government's decision, but at this point, the local government authority can then request a rehearing or appeal this decision. Excel has been using bullying tactics throughout this process. Landowners have been threatened and recently some have been served legal documents filed with district court to pursue immediate possession using state statute of eminent domain. The county is being threatened with an appeal to the PUC if the application is denied. Asking for a different route that is better for our citizens is not an unreasonable condition. Please stand up to the bullying tactics employed by Excel and vote to deny their present 1041 and SUR applications. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
Good morning, and it's nice to meet you all. We have not met the new Commissioners. My name is Pamela Chapel, 30680 Mountain View Trail, and I have been talking to a gentleman who is his county and he's involved with people out of state that are going through the same things we are, and he said that we could win this. And his name is Josh Loden, he's with American, our American lands. One of the things that he wanted me to stress today is, he goes, "Go over that contract very carefully." He goes, "Because they will write in things that basically say that once the power lines are up, they can pretty much do what they want with your county, like they can add more little land turns and things to come in and take over more of your land," and he says, "And they don't need your permission at that point because of the way they write the contract." So, he said, "Go over that carefully, maybe even have an attorney look at it." He's also very, very involved with the solar and turbines, and he said that's, even though it's in the future, that's the next step, and he said they'll take 3,000 acres more to put the panels up, and now that we're researching the panels, with the type of weather we have here, if those get damaged, it's our county that's gonna have to pay for all that, and it's a mess. I mean, he can show you picture after picture of what these fields look like after hail hits them, or if they get too heavy of a snow on them, which we get a lot of snow out here. The turbines are really worse, and he'll give you information on all that because with our high winds here, if they, if it busts one of those, you know, sleeves or whatever, he goes, and they fall to the ground, they catch on fire, he goes, "They've been known to completely collapse where all those fluids and stuff go into our soil." He goes, "It can go into the water. It damages the land for hundreds of years." Like, once they, we allow them to start doing that, it's pretty much ruined our land out here, and he said, "You're gonna, it's gonna hurt you, us, more financially to have to fix all that, plus, who's gonna wanna come here and live?" You know, it's just gonna turn into this contaminated county. And so, he said, "Once they really step into this, they're just gonna take over. They're gonna start taking over huge amounts of land and stuff like that." And he is willing, he's in Colorado, but he doesn't live in Albert. He said he is willing to come and drive out here to help with the meetings and to give you as much information as possible, as long as he has a little notice.
All right.
So, that's all I really wanted to let you know, is, he said basically, he said they're gonna really bully us if we deny, he goes, "They're gonna really start to put pressure and bully and threaten with lawsuits and all this," which they kind of already have. And he said, "Just, it's a lot of big talk and they know how to intimidate and stuff." So, he said, "Just hang strong and as long as we have the public support, they'll do what they can to help us negotiate through all this stuff, too." Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
More, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Don Gray, 16,000 Hury, 86. You're very familiar with me. I usually get up here and speak about Excel, but unfortunately, I can't speak about Excel because I've been advised by attorney, because pending litigation, that's gonna go to me personally. But I would like to speak to another issue that's part of the county. It's came to our attention that we no longer have a county attorney, and I was hoping that you could speak to the process of where we move forward, how the county's gonna deal with that, if they're accepting applications, are we gonna hire an outside firm to help with some of this litigation? Taking us back to Excel, there's gonna be a lot of legal stuff that comes into that, and that's just a general question, if we can speak to that, please. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. I'll just comment that we have contracted with a attorney and his firm, and we're working out the details, but we have a contract in place at this time. Right? Thank you. Any other public comments?
Trent Chapel, 30680 Mountain View Trail, Kiowa, Colorado. I want to discuss the economic impacts that are gonna happen to the residents of Elbert Excel not providing to anybody in Elbert County is not going to be bringing us jobs. They're not going to be bringing us a whole lot of economic income, and if the county gets their proposed $2 million a year, then let's discuss about what land use, loss of land use, and depreciation of land value. At the meeting last week, they went as a positive 2% to a negative 12. On average, it's a negative 35%, and in this area view, and the beauty of this county is what sells a lot of property. They also were trying to diminish the amount of property that they were gonna take up. It figured out to being 150 feet times 49 miles, I believe, is correct. I'm gonna round up just a short bit and call it 50 and 160 because an acre of ground is eight feet by a mile. That's 1,000 acres. Land values are consistently $4,000 an acre for raw ground out here. Knock 35% of that out, we're already at a minimum of 64, pushing 150 in lost value of our lands. Their proposed install is $168 million. If we're losing 2/3 of that, just in our loss in land values, for something that they're providing us nothing for, as fiduciaries of this county, you need to be aware of that. Everything that we've looked at on this is negative. Last night, I was looking at codes on how far, you know, vertical and horizontal distances away from buildings. Well, I did not take the time to use their ways of measuring it. I did come across something in the agricultural use. They're saying someone horseback over eight feet in the air should not be permitted. And I'm going, "Holy buckets, that means I couldn't go take my horse out and check cattle." And then what is that gonna do to workman's comp for anybody that's paid to go do that? What about the economic impact of property insurance with the increased fire dangers? The wind out here, as anybody who's lived out here for any period of time knows real well, that we exceed 75 miles an hour per their proposed power line structures. The amount of tornadoes that we get out in this way between here and Lyman, without knowing the exact, but it's a lot. Last year, I count eight times that 86 was closed right outside of Kiowa, and that's just memory, I didn't make a notation of it, due to high winds and blowing snow. Our economic, what it's gonna cost the citizens of this county in loss in property values, insurance, and possibly even workman's comp, this isn't worth it. Have we, I also know that Excel's going to be, and providing power to the major metro areas is more than likely going to happen, but we have a right to tell them where they put it. And personally, I don't care if Denver and Colorado Springs pays a little bit more for their electricity instead of taking 30% of my property values. That's what I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comments section of this meeting. Next item is discussion items. First up on that is the proposed amendments to the Elbert County standards and specifications. Monte, or, come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Dale Gillan, the engineer for Elbert County. Today I'm presenting discussion topics for amendments to our Elbert County construction standards and specifications. The first item that is on your list will be proposed fee schedule for land developers. Attached in that review fee schedule and permit cost sheets, right now, construction standards in Section 153 state that the county may contract private consultants to supplement plan review and analysis at the cost of the developer. Right now, I don't believe that that is being enforced and the state, and the developers, you know, are not paying for some of the review fees that they do for like subdivisions and other types of development. So, having this in place will let the developers know what to expect in terms of fees and should provide most of our reviews that we conduct here in the county or contract out with private engineering firms, consulting or engineering firms. So, the fee schedule you're looking at was developed using current and competitive fees that are in line with surrounding counties and municipalities. Any questions on that item?
I don't have any questions, sir.
Yeah, I have one. By implementing these changes, what's the impact to our budget on an annual basis if we implement this suggestion?
I mean, just guessing on some of the fees that have been charged or we've paid out is probably a few hundred thousand dollars a year, two to three.
Pretty significant.
Mr. Schroeder, do you have any questions?
And currently, we're not recouping any of those engineering costs?
I think we're incurring some of them, but not all of them because with just a statement and the standards, they just haven't been tracked and invoiced.
Okay, and it looks like the increase is proposed on what we do charge is relatively minimal. I guess my concern, I think, may take a little more time to ferret out exactly where we wanna go is on the street lane design criteria. I understand the desire for it, I appreciate the time you spent with me the other day explaining the reasoning for it and why there's a desire for it. I just think we need to explore a little bit further on perhaps a size of development. I might not saying this correctly, but a person that is, has 1,000 acres and just dividing it into 10, 100 acres, is this still gonna affect and be requirement for them? I can see an argument both ways on how that might go, so as, maybe we need to sit down again and go over that again. We don't wanna make it so prohibitive that they have to do miles and miles of roads that they can't do what they wanna do with their property, and that's my opinion, but so let's continue to talk about that one, the rest of them, I think, make sense as far as where we're at with that, but that's my comment on these, and so I'd like to have some more discussions with the department on that one in particular.
Yes, all of these discussion proposal items are open for discussion. Feel free to contact Set Public Works and if you have any questions or, you know, like I said, these are just proposals, so, you know, they can help clarify things, so, anyway.
And I do appreciate it and appreciate the work that went into it. I know it was not easy, you must've done a lot of research throughout the counties, I appreciate that, but just to take the extra time to make sure that it fits where we're at as well, I think is important.
Yes.
Thank you, Dale.
Commissioner Schroeder, I'd like to comment to that with the lane proposal thing really quick. If you'll notice, within the document and the amendment, there's a specific traffic count associated with what would implement a turn lane, that kind of thing. Yes, it does involve any development, and I misspoke earlier. For instance, if someone was to build a concrete plant on said road that had that kind of traffic count and something to that effect, turn lanes would be required. With the current traffic count that Dale came up with, associated with that is, in this- this county, you're talking about two roads that it's impacting, County Road thirteen and County Road one sixty-six. Those are the only two roads in this county that have the level of average daily traffic that that particular amendment would impact. Those two roads are already fairly developed out, so in the scenario that you just mentioned, I don't think it would be...
Part of the equation.
Part of the equation, exactly. So, and that's the key, in my opinion. We can have more discussion on it, that's absolutely great, but if, if you pay attention to the traffic count aspect of it, that narrows the field way down. We're not talking about all county roads throughout the entire county, so.
Okay, but as I understand it, this, this exceeds even what CDOT standards would be?
Yes.
I understand, yeah. So, we can, we can discuss it, I appreciate the, the understanding, and I agree to a certain extent, but we'll just need to continue to, to work through it. No, no, I appreciate the information. All information is good.
Okay, so, we were discussing the, the fee schedule, which is the first item on my list, and we kind of went down to, we, we're gonna go over culverts next, but I'll go ahead and skip over to discussion item of Section one, or seven twenty-eight, that's the third item, and, and that's what Monty was just talking about here. That's a standard relating to street lane design criteria. The proposed criteria in, in the information you have is in response to several concerns by county departments, businesses, residents, and the general public of basically having turn lanes and different things for busy areas. The discussion items directly address, you know, all those concerns, and these would be county guidelines based on experience and judgment and kind of common sense of putting something next to an, you know, where big trucks are turning in right next to an intersection that could really cause a lot of problems, things like that. But these would be county guidelines and not necessarily national or state traffic engineering guidelines. So, that's where the, basically the turn lane, uh, street lane design criteria is at. Is there any other questions on, on that?
I had a couple of comments real quick. Both, but that and the fees, one is a safety issue and one is an economic issue. I'd like to try to move this forward if, if we think there needs to be more discussion. We get that done as soon as possible and move forward with it. If we amend it or make any changes to it, that's fine during that discussion, but we get it back up here as an action item as soon as we can, because that's a big economic impact to the county, if you're talking two or three hundred thousand dollars annually to our budget, if we can implement these fees, which is comparable to the surrounding counties, and we have failed or neglected or just hadn't imposed any of those fees previously. I think it's important that we get back, get back and revisit this as soon as possible, and that's just my two cents.
And the fees, if you look at those, they're based on individual properties, which are just smaller fees, if somebody wants to split their land or do that kind of stuff. It's just to cover all the, the meetings and reviews. It's, most of the fees that would impact us are from the big subdivisions, and those are, and those are listed in there by size, the bigger the size, the, the higher the fee for review. So, yes, I agree, we should, you know, take a look at those quicker.
I don't disagree, but I also think we can split the fees as a separate item versus the regulation items, if we're still working through those. The fees can certainly come forward easy, probably quicker than the, the regs, and it doesn't have to be together. We could split the, the fees from the regs and make it two different items.
Yeah, it's just in our regulations, we do have a section for that, so we do want to update that at whatever time that's refer, because it does reference the fee schedules and the just fees and, and engineering inspections in general.
So, Commissioner, do you want to, should we go ahead and just plan a work-study session for this?
We can do a work-study, or I can, I can go talk to the Pub Works Department separately, whichever is, is desired, I guess.
All right.
The next item of discussion on your list would be culverts. This is under private driveways in Section seven eighty. This is just giving specific ownership and maintenance criteria for, for property owners. There's been a lot of confusion lately on who maintains what culverts and where, so this just kind of gives a lot more detail on, on that.
I have a quick question in regards to culverts and the responsibility of the property owners. There's really no enforcement of any of these responsibilities, though, correct? For example...
No, I don't believe there is any. Monty, do you know if there's...
No, there's no enforcement, and we've never really had that level. This is more to clear up of, when we get calls in of, hey, my driveway culvert's plugged, or there's sediment within my culvert, you know, who's, who takes that on? Now, the ditch to and from the culvert obviously is the Public Works Department. The, the process of through the, the culvert is on the property owner. If there was any kind of enforcement, it would be a code enforcement issue, but we kind of, until things get more lined out within code enforcement, you know, we're not there. But in my fifteen years here, we've never had an issue of that level.
But it gives you... This gives, this will give you something to reference, and you can say, hey, it's in our guidelines, so this is how it works.
In the, in the past, on the actual driveway permit, it has had a one-sentence item of, of the driveway culvert maintenance is the responsibility of the property owner. I just think this takes that to the next level, gives them something more robust to reference, you know, if we drive folks that way.
Okay, and the, the last item is just a, a table that is put in there for pavement sections for asphalt and, and roads. This is kind of a industry standards used for private, private and public roads, and other counties have tables similar to this, and the reason that we're putting this in is there's a lot of private and public roads that were never built to any engineering standards or anything, and, you know, they might have a thin section of, of asphalt over a, a not-so-great soil subgrade, and this would, you know, and they call us wanting to know, like, what, how should we do it? At least these minimums have, you know, conditioned a subgrade and have this much pavement on it, things like that, just to kind of make things clear and, and for them to build a good road. And...
Any questions, gentlemen?
I'll, I'll get with Pub Works and we'll...
Yeah, we'll be happy to discuss any of these issues with you guys. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next discussion item on here is Sheriff's Office CBA.
So, in our, our packet, the reason I wanted this moved to a discussion item, our staff summary on this was completely blank, there was no information on that for either myself or for the community to have an idea of what this is about. And also, I have not seen a final agreement. I, I'd searched my emails again this morning, I do not have a final agreement, and to ask me to vote on something I haven't had a chance to read reminds me of a Democrat comment a few years back that we need to pass it to know what's in it, and I am not comfortable with that. And so I would propose that we put this off until we have a chance, I don't know if Commissioner Buck has seen the final document or not, but I have not, until we've had a chance to review that.
Fine, we also, we did review this in executive session, but that's fine. Mr. Buck, comment?
No, I thought we had discussed it and reviewed it prior to sign off by a judicial judge, I thought was the process, or my...
Well, the way this is written, this isn't the stipulated agreement, this is the collective bargaining agreement. Is, is that, are we talking about two different things here?
Yes, but we did discuss this in executive session, but if we need to pause this and take a look at it and get it out and make sure that there, all the questions are answered, I would certainly do that.
Okay, I mean, we move the approval of the Sheriff's Office Collective Bargaining Agreement to next board meeting, pending review by county commissioners.
All right.
Gentlemen, if I may make some comments on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, is that acceptable?
What?
Just for a little clarity and to explain to the public, first, thank you Chairman D'Angelo, Commissioner Buck, Commissioner Schroeder. The county officials, the Elbert County Sheriff's Office, the union, and their respective attorneys have negotiated this collective bargaining agreement for over a year now. Over the past year, Sheriff Norton, under Sheriff Fisher, county officials, the members of the union have all approved this collective bargaining agreement. There's been numerous executive sessions, hundreds of emails, hundreds of hours spent by the attorneys, and I can say this with almost positivity, the union is out of patience completely. If this collective bargaining agreement is delayed, it will result in a lawsuit against the county and the Sheriff's Office, brought by the union for bad faith negotiating. It's just this simple. This thing has been negotiated for over a year, it's time to get it done. I, I don't know how much more we could look at this. This agreement, I know for a fact, was sent to former county attorney Greer. Now, whether he shared that with everyone, I don't know. But, the CBA that we're discussing, it's not only fair for everyone that it affects, it's fair for the citizens of this county as taxpayers. If we go to a lawsuit, it's just gonna result in additional and unnecessary legal fees that will likely exceed any costs that the county may incur in this CBA when they adopt it, if they adopt it. That is just unnecessary.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Sure, Todd Collins, I'm the attorney for the Elbert County Sheriff's Office, sorry. The CBA that's been negotiated, it's fair for the deputies. Deputies have accepted it, they've approved it, I believe they voted on it a couple of weeks ago, and it's been signed off, like I said, by at least four different attorneys. This is just more for those of the public who have kept up with the issues between the Sheriff's Office and the county over the past year. The CBA is more than just a collective bargaining agreement, it is the start of the healing of a damaged relationship between this county and its Sheriff's Office. There's absolutely no reason that this CBA should not be adopted as soon as possible, and I would recommend that it get adopted today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., do you have any comments?
Nope, there's a motion on the floor.
Do you have any comments?
No. Other than I, I thought we had reviewed it in executive session like, like you had mentioned, we had agreed on it, we had agreed on it with our attorney, and today we were gonna approve it. That was my understanding.
Okay, well, it's still under discussion item, so it would have to be moved to an action item, and then we'd have to have a motion for it to be approved at that point, if that's what, if that's what you want to do. So, is there a motion to move the Sheriff's Office CBA to action item?
There's a motion on the floor already to move it to next meeting.
Motion on the floor to move it to next meeting, I missed that. Is there a second on that motion? All right, motion dies. Any other motions regarding this?
I'll make a motion that we move the approval of the Sheriff's Office CBA to an action item and recommend approval.
All right, is there a second? All right, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion carries, motion's being moved to action item. All right, next item is action items, and first item on here is consideration of resolution approving the updated internal building code fee schedule. Rob here today.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Rob Dana, the chief building official for Elbert County's Building Department. This is just to introduce the latest valuation table. That's the August twenty-four valuation table is what we were hoping to be set in place along with the suggested fee changes that have been discussed, and see if there was a decision made on that, on the fee changes.
Mr. Schroeder, do you have any questions or comments about this, sir?
Yeah, I appreciate the time I was able to spend with you, Rob, talking about that. We had this discussed, a, a concern, maybe people finding a workaround and having their homeowner pull the permits as opposed to a contractor. Is that, is that still a, a concern of yours that, that needs to be addressed?
Discussing it with JR this morning, he pointed out a couple, I guess, variables where it's not as big of a concern as I was thinking. So, we've discussed it for a little bit this morning on that, and he, we came to the conclusion it's not as bad as I was thinking.
I appreciate that, and I, it was just a question that I wanted to make sure we had addressed, so that we're treating everybody fairly as much as we can. So, I appreciate that information, and I guess that, that's all I have.
Commissioner Buck?
I don't, we had a couple of work sessions on this, I appreciate your guys' time. We spent a lot of thorough analysis of the documents and of our current fee schedule and what, what we've been currently doing, so I appreciate that. We had a couple of work sessions, we had it as a discussion item, I think we're ready to move forward. I think we're ready to move forward, and I appreciate your guys' hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Or is there a, a motion to approve?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'll make a motion to approve consideration of a resolution approving the updated international building code fee schedule as presented in the packet.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, next item is back to the Sheriff's Office CBA. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll restate the motion I made earlier, apparently it is incorrect, but I make a motion to approve the Sheriff's Office CBA.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, my, my concern probably isn't so much with the actual agreement as is the, the process here, just to clarify.
Noted. Again, this was discussed with our previous attorney in the exec, executive session, so... All right, there's a motion, there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Nay.
All right, next item on the agenda is board planning. Do we have any agenda items for the next meeting that you'd like to, to put on there, sir?
Yes, I have two that I would like to have discussions about. One is, there's been ongoing talk about a modification or change to our economic development zone. I think it's time that we have a discussion on that, particularly in light of Public Works' presentation on the street lane design. The issues that have come up with that have been directly related to the EDZ, and, and so if that is being modified in some, some way, that may change what we want to do on the street lane design, simply because now if there's a modification or a reduction in, in the EDZ, that would require home landowners to go through the S U R process to be able to do a project, which would allow for Public Works to do their evaluations for that approval. We always get recommendations on that, so I think we need to have a, a discussion on the, on the EDZ and the direction that we're going. Likewise, I think it's time that we publicly talked about a moratorium. The rumors are out there, they're running rampant on what exactly is being talked about, and I've heard from two different individuals that it's pulling investment from the county already, just on rumor, and so the, the effect of the moratorium has taken place just because of the discussion, and we need to, to come to a, a conclusion on that, just to give people that are interested in investing in our county some, some surety. Right now, it's a lot of unsure, and we need to have it discussed.
Great, I agree. All right, anything else, sir?
Yep.
All right, Mr. Buck?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I'd like to start with the EDZ zone. That was discussed in detail. We had given our previous attorney direction to present with some red line guideline changes. That was gonna be presented to the Planning Commission, and if they approved those red lines, that was gonna come before the board for discussion, so that was in the process. It was delayed and postponed, and we were told that we needed outside counsel or a consultant to make any changes to our rules and regulations. I think we are moving forward with that process with Jennifer Jones, and she's gonna be bringing that in front of the Planning Commission for discussion, and then it will come before the Board of County Commissioners for a discussion at that time. But we did discuss it in detail with our attorney, the three of us did, so there has been some discussion, just nothing formal has been discussed or passed, so that's kind of where we're at with the EDZ zone. As far as a moratorium, we had a executive session in regards to a strategic pause slash moratorium. I brought it up as a discussion item, I think maybe a month or so ago, in one of our board meetings, so it has been discussed, and where we have left it was we needed to define exactly what we wanted that to cover if we were gonna move forward. We have not done that to date, as far as come to an agreement or had a further discussion and pass that executive session. We probably should do another executive session and bring that pinpoint focused on what it wants to be or, or what it should be, and, and get that draft drawn up and have that discussion.
I would, I think that this is a big enough issue that it needs to be a public discussion, not another executive session.
That's fine. We could do it as, we could do it as a workshop, open to the public, or we can do it in one of our meetings, it's however you would want, want to do it.
And just, I'll add to that, just circle back here a little bit, that there's been some delay with this, and that's been because we were trying to identify people to put on this oversight committee, and we've got the, the emails from Jennifer about each commissioner identifying and nominating, it was five people each, so we've just gotten that done, so that's why there's been some delay with this. But anyway, so, I, I, I don't have any objection. I think it would be good to have a public, open public meeting about it and get input.
I agree.
All right. Anything else to add to the agenda for the next meeting? So we'll get this workshop study session set up, we'll get that date set for that. We have any pending hearings? I don't know of any at this point in time. You, are you aware of any? Mr. Schroder, are you aware of any?
No, we got a couple of things going on next week, I think, but I can't think of them off the top of my head.
Okay. All right, with that being the end of this portion of the meeting, we will recess until one P M. Thank you.